Of the United States.
Thank you, and welcome to our meeting. We are. We're graced with. Two wonderful people, yes. Who don't usually come.
It's not you and I, huh?
No.
Wonderful people that always come.
It's very.
I'll tell Dave he's not listening, okay?
Uh, next thing on the agenda, approval of the minutes, and they're not.
Okay. No, they weren't.
I did it, your agenda I sent you, I didn't think I'd have them done, but then I finished them and I attached them and I didn't, I didn't change it anywhere, so.
Okay.
With my function, but you did have.
Yeah. There were minutes, I did read the minutes.
You did?
I. Most of the Kristen's were fine, it was not.
Did I say I do one wrong? I apologize. I do know how to spell your name.
I just had to give you a hard time. So, um.
Sure.
It's up to you, I read them, but I didn't see anything.
You didn't.
I've read them too, and I, I didn't bring them with me, but I, she. Other than one Kristen.
That's right, that's what I.
Kristen.
Ten, I was a ten once.
Yeah, so. Uh. What do we?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve them if you could.
A, a chance.
Taking a real risk.
Yep, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the minutes. From, uh, what meeting was it from?
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Oh, okay.
And I'll second them.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ken and a second by Chris to approve. Those much twenty second minutes, uh, favorite. Thank you. And next is department report. And, uh. You, and you have something?
Oh, that's, that, like, somebody has questions, though.
I just had one question.
Sure.
Um, the Compton Hall parking lot, was it that new section, new, newer, were they only going to there? Where it's cut to right now?
Right.
Okay.
I actually had them go, they weren't gonna, they were actually.
Not gonna fix the model?
Yeah, wouldn't even go that far. I'm like. The measurement on the bid. Says you, you go here.
Yeah.
We, we need to go there.
Yes.
Um. The issues they ran into were. Sub base gravel or lack of it, it was mostly clay, they explained why the parking lot. Did what it did always. Um. They excavated a. Fifty-five by sixty section out, down fifteen inches and put in good base. For the worst part of it, unfortunately. When they. When the paver. Paving crew got there. They were. Looking at the rest, but there was still too much moisture in the ground. And it was. Basically like, best way to describe it, it's basically like a water bed. So, at this point, they're gonna hold off for a few weeks, let the rest of it dry out as much as it can before they go pavement down. So. So. We'll have the dirt parking lot for a bit. Until everything dries out, then they'll come back and. Do it right, so it doesn't spider crack and. Have other issues.
Nice outback.
Yeah, the outback is very nice.
You have a date for road paving yet? Have you heard anything from the crew?
Yeah, I met with the paver, uh, last week, he came down, we went over all the roads that we're gonna pave. Uh, right now, we're on the schedule for. May twenty first or twenty second, whatever that Monday is, uh, that week. Um, obviously weather dependent. Um, so. Okay, yeah, so. But he's, he's getting there as soon as he can.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Well.
Uh. Oh, I, actually, I have one, one more question, did, were you able to? Get the Wagon Bridge. Upman Act?
Yeah, Cruz is gonna do it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Or tomorrow, I don't wanna say morning, yeah.
Just FYI. IFNW extended the surface use restriction in the Wagon area. We had. Uh, the upman hadn't been put back. Yet, and we had somebody. Putting their boat in down there. And Facebook. Lit up like a Christmas tree and. The game warden showed up and. Felt with the problem.
You brought it together?
Oh, yeah, called him right up, cuz he, his car was parked right there, so they knew. They knew who it was, and they called him in. And, you know, he claimed, I don't know what he claims. The world's gone crazy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um. Where do I start? Been a busy, busy week. Busy weekend. Uh. As you all know, once they've got hit five burglaries over and with the. Sunday night into Monday morning, last night we got hit, the fireworks store got broken into. Uh. They just, they're just hitting the central main area really hard right now. We've had. Two intel meetings with everybody, every police department that has had commercial burglaries, um, working on warrants to. Uh. Secure our cellphone data right now and. The ongoing investigation, that's why I'm gonna go right now, but, um. Bert's Cruiser, the twenty twenty Ford, uh, we've been having sporadic problems with, with that, uh. Getting. Engine lights and the dashboard lighting up when it's not supposed to, uh, been in the shop. Six times in the past two months. Uh. They, they kinda. Freshly in management order right now, you know, okay, we think it's this, the computer's telling us, they replace it and does it all over again. So, the solution to the problem is they're gonna put a hole in the wiring harness in the car, they had to do it, twenty eight hundred dollars. Uh, already over in that budget line, but I just wanted to give you guys heads up, uh. What it is, it's only hate to say that, but. Cork is the one. Doing it, there's no recalls on them. It's out of warranty. So. That's where we're at, that's down to cork now, and they're gonna start working on it first next week. Um. Other than that, been a really good one.
We have a new car. You, or a new to you car.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I got one of those guys now, mine's in the, mine's over at, uh, Freddy's being. In fact. Insurance job because I backed off my end of my driveway in the culvert, hit a rock. During one of the snowstorms. Finally. Got the pipes in so he can repair it, so that's where that is right now.
Can you say again what, what's wrong with the twenty-four?
It's, it's the twenty twenty Ford is, um, they're replacing the wiring harness in a twenty, it's a twenty twenty, yeah. It's got seventy-six thousand in the.
He said what's wrong with it.
Oh, I'm on wood, I, I love those, those, those vehicles.
I'm with a great warranty though. Three years old and it needs wiring harness back there.
Still shooting the problem.
Problem. If it still doesn't. Well.
That's, that, that's. The concern of mine.
Yeah.
I, i- is if this is, this is the solution to the problem, because they don't know what the problem is, what happens when it's not the solution to the problem? Where are we at?
I thought in this, in this section, you could. Come on, it's here tonight, if you wanna ask her any questions, I, I didn't have. Really anything specific for her, but you had said earlier in the year that you wanted her to come, and this was one of the dates that she was able to come, so. She's here, if you have any, I think you have a brief. Synopsis of where we are, and then, yeah.
Uh, so, I'm here because it's that time of year, and. Um, we're getting ready to set up for commitment. Future, but. Um, at the present time, uh, we're at seventy-two percent, I'm sorry, of market value. Uh, we have planned on doing a slight factor that will keep us in compliance for this year. Um, our seventy-two percent is, is based on twenty twenty-one sales. So we can anticipate, the year before, we were at eighty-two, so we can anticipate that next year, um. Without any kind of, uh, a factoring increase. That we would be somewhere around sixty, maybe a little less. Uh, because the sales are coming in hot and heavy and a lot higher than we have them assessed for. Um, so our last adjustment was our market analysis that we did in two thousand and seventeen. So this is technically our seventh year using those valuations. Um, and I know that we're starting to put money away to do a revaluation in the future, um. When, I don't know, but. I just wanted to give you a little overview. Answer any questions that you might have. Don't come that often, so if you have anything, I'm here.
Uh, what's your take on the difference, uh, in appreciation between lakefront and non-lakefront or waterfront?
Right now, because when the sales started with COVID. There, I used to be able to say, you know, want non-waterfront was this percentage, everything's selling crazy, so. It, it, there isn't a, a, an adjustment to a neighborhood or a waterfront neighborhood, or even. An interior neighborhood that. That's out of whack, everybody is. Is lower than, than the sales.
And, uh, uh, how does this affect our homestead exemptions?
Well, uh, a ratio, homes to any exemption, uh, as well as our personal property and our tree growth has to be adjusted by the ratio. So. Of course, the lower the ratio, the less of a, of an exemption that anybody gets, so. I'd like to be able to say that, I think we claimed ninety last year, and I'd like to be able to say that we could get to ninety again this year. With the understanding that it's a band-aid.
What are the prospects for getting a revaluation, boots-on-the-ground revaluation done? Quickly?
Not good. Everybody's doing a rebuild, so you have to kind of put the RFP out and see who's available, but. It will be at least two years. I think before we could get somebody, and the idea is when it does go out, you have to kind of be flexible in it, say, we'd like to have it done for. Twenty-five, but. You have to realistically know that you might not get any response, cuz nobody's available. So it's, it's good to be a rebuild company right now, cuz there's plenty of work.
So with that, with that significant investment that you made in the revale fund, we could, if you so choose, we could, we could go out, RFP now, knowing that. We're not gonna have to pay whatever might be above that that you put in there for two, maybe three years, so you, you could get yourself in the queue at this point, if, if you all chose to do that. So.
I think that would make sense, that we do that sooner than later. Just so we can stay in the line. And, or, or hope that someone else drops out.
Yeah.
Right, cancellation.
If it's a good company, if it's a company we want, right, yeah. Yeah.
So what are the? No, not to name names, but I mean, are there particular people that? You know you want to have as opposed to?
Well, I think that, I think, I think the understanding is in, in. Any of the assessing world, you know which companies do it regularly and produce on time and. Do what they say they're gonna do, if you, if you get somebody who might be. Understaffed and that. You know. It's a big jobs, it's a big job, so you get, you know. Somebody who's not done it a lot, or do not have a lot of people that can go out and, cuz you wanna do it fast, you want it done in a year. You know. So.
Yeah, I was reading some municipality had planned on doing. Some, uh, it was weird, a wacky revaluation of a quarter of the town every.
Well, that's.
What's, what's up with that?
Well, that's. That is done regularly in other places.
Yeah.
And they do, you, you'll, you'll pay to have your town visited a quarter at a time. Um, and a lot of towns implement those new values at that time, and then everybody catches up. Um. No, not for me, that's not how I like to do things.
That sounds like it's like a quarter of your town, because the town is always inequitable with the other quarters.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like just a recipe for.
Correct.
And it could be worth, when we did the rebuild here in two thousand and seven, they used sales from two thousand five, two thousand seven, and then the market dropped. So for a long period of time, I was at a hundred and fifty and a hundred and twenty percent of market value. So you imagine you do a quarter and you reduce a quarter and everybody else is paying high, it doesn't work either way, so. I, I'm big for, let's keep it going and then.
There's a financial rationale for it, right, cuz what they're doing is they're building. That quarterly cost into their operating budget. So it, it allows these towns to not go to town meeting and ask for that investment every. You know, every ten years, whatever, for the rebuild, so that's why they do it, it's a, it's just a, it's, it's a political thing, so they can just avoid. Having these discussions every decade about, do we wanna pay for a rebuild?
And, and it looks big when it's a rebuild, it's a big, but really, you're paying for it every year.
When was the last valuation done?
A full revaluation was done in two thousand and seven. And it cost a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. We did a market adjustment in two thousand seventeen that cost fifty thousand. At that point, it was. Before. Sales went crazy, and the, it was hopeful that that would give us another ten years or so before. So, the timing isn't really, well, we. We will get ten years out of the market adjustment, but it, it's time to go house to house again.
And, and, and everybody has, I mean, there's no way to avoid those market swings from.
No.
And, uh.
No, because we had the, we had the opposite with our last full rebound. I mean, I had appeals like you wouldn't believe, because everybody was buying for. Twenty percent less than I had it assessed for, so, yeah, it, it, we never know when we're gonna do it, whether or not the market's gonna drop or. Soar.
Oh, if you, if you want me to put it together, I'll bring you the RFP, and then you guys can decide on, on the, on the language in it, that, that would be fine, just as long as I know if you wanna move it ahead. I'll put it together.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a sense to get it started, I'll, I'll bring it to.
Yeah.
Probably next meeting.
You've already sent out, um. Inquiries on personal property.
I have.
Yeah.
And I've, I've sent letters as well.
Yeah, um. You told me about a number of programs that businesses can avail themselves of.
Yeah.
I, I didn't. Believe that was widely known.
Well, I send a letter every, every, with every, so when I send out personal property, I send the business. A full listing of how they're taxed, what we tax them for, and what their value is. So nobody's surprised what, how you're taxed, I send a letter that says. You know, I need a, a full declaration, at the bottom of it, I also have about the Betty and the Better Program for businesses. And I also send a Betty application, which is a business exemption tax, business. Equipment tax exemption, so if they qualify, they can fill it out right then and there and send it back. So I provide all kinds of information to every business, and also if they have any questions, they can always call. So I don't have any surprises for them.
Right, what's your? Impression as to compliance?
Well, the big companies are always gonna give it to me, you know, any big company or any leasing company will. So smaller companies, a lot of times, will send things back, or say same as last year, um, or not reply at all. It's the same no matter. If you're a small town or a big city. You get people who do and people who don't.
And what's the recourse if they don't?
Well, I can always estimate, and I try really hard to inquire if. Somebody, you know, do you know if this business is. Doing something or bought anything, or, you know, cuz people who are local know better than I do, um. Uh, but the other thing is, personal property and small businesses, it's usually not a lot. Not a lot of value, you know, and the other thing is, if, if a company has, you know, hand tools. It's not taxable, farm equipment, the first ten thousand dollars is exempt. If you have less than a thousand dollars in value, I do not tax you. You've gotta have a cutoff at some point, you know, it's less than twenty bucks a year in taxes, and. It costs more money chasing twenty dollars than it's worth.
Technically, you could count spoons in a restaurant.
Oh, yeah.
But nobody does, you know, nobody does that, it's not.
Yeah.
So productive.
But we do the best we can, and, and I attempt to get everybody and. Get a fair value on it. Thank you. Well, it's good to see you again. All right. Thank you, welcome.
I have a question, if I. Did. You sent the letter out about open space.
Yeah.
Trying to promote people. They're in the stands, but, classes, they were successfully retired.
Um, well, I had three inquiries. And after your letter, letter, but. Um. Two people that applied for programs this year. I don't know if it's a direct response or not. And if I had had a conversation with them, I probably would have asked them. Um. So, I don't really know, but.
Was there one on Hutchinson Walkin and one with the Congress, one likely to.
Sorry. Um. Okay, that's even better. Okay. Good. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
You don't, I think.
No, I don't think so, okay, I can't think, I didn't find any notes in my paper. But I didn't put any notes in my paper, so, no, I can't think.
You're, you were aware.
Oh, yeah, just for the weekend, I, every, every year, and my college buddies, we go, uh, we went paintballing, it's. Like cards.
Is possibly?
Paintball, like paintball guns, shoot each other with paintball guns.
You do that?
Yeah, we, we, we get a little, winded a little faster nowadays, so we're not as fast. We hide more. We go to New Hampshire, it's kind of, kind of central, because we're coming from all over the place, Pennsylvania, Vermont. California, actually, one five oh every year.
And. You know, did you go paintball, did you? Little paintball stains on my house from my sons. How was your trip?
I think we had a good time.
You didn't go to Ireland?
Well, my brother Steve went, he golfs, I don't golf.
Oh, I took, to have two. McDonald's and Ireland at once is.
Not much. Too much trouble.
Okay. You had a good trip.
We went to New Mexico, and it was, yeah, it was really. One thing that's kind of amazed me. We, we climbed up. A mountain, or we didn't get all the way to the top, but when we looked down on Santa Fe and, um. Looked for. Solar panels, and there, we have many, many more of them in Maine than they do there, and it's very sunny there. So we would say, oh, look, there's some solar panels, you know, it's so. Kind of rare.
That was my observation about Florida, the sunshine.
Ravel, ravel all the way to Florida, you just don't see many. Strange.
Yeah. Uh, but there's flagboard reports.
I've got one thing. Um, I learned, actually, I've got two things, uh, I learned yesterday. Day before, uh, from the engineer that we hired as a grant writer, John Kenny. Uh, for the North Monmouth Water Project, he had submitted. A request that was the letter that. Part of it was the letter that the five of us signed. To Susan Collins' office. I learned that we made the first cut. For. Uh, an award of an additional four hundred thousand dollars. To be dedicated. To the. Engineering piece of that project. Um, it's, uh, a step forward, not necessarily a final decision, because. Things still need to be approved in Washington DC, but at least we're on her short list of projects that she is submitting from her office. So that's good news. Um, also learned from Mr. Kenny that, um, there are two other opportunities. He's pursuing for some other funding, one of them is specific to the Northeast and to infrastructure-type projects. Ours is a nice fit for that. Uh, up to a million dollars would be, we'd be eligible for up to a million dollars of finance of that. If we were to be successfully chosen. And then I think there was one other that he was. Looking at some.
Two, there's the Northern Border.
That was the first one.
And, uh, C, um, CBTG.
Okay. Yeah, so Community Development Block Grant. Um, is also on his radar screen, so that was the eighty-five hundred dollars of funding that we approved. Um, the Water Association to. Pay for. Um, second thing on my list was, I went to Augusta. Last. Thursday, the day after we met, and had a really good public hearing on the possibility of. Uh, allowing. An exemption for municipalities who allow local recycling at their transfer stations, so liability exemption, and that would. If it were a successful bill, and we still have a long way to go with that, but we had a pretty good hearing. Um, that would allow the pickers at the transfer station back. At the lumber pile and the. Metal pile for scrounging of various. Parts. So, um, so stay tuned on that, it'll be a little more work to do. Uh, to, uh, to move that forward, but we'll see.
Additional update on the North, North Monmouth. Um. They have finally received enough respondents to the income survey.
Oh, good.
Not seen, I have not seen final numbers. If we're gonna make the. Meet the, meet the requirements, if they have enough respondents now.
Excellent.
To, uh, inform that, that part of the.
Yeah, and even if they don't. Meet the absolute bottom number for income. There would still be partial credit if we're somewhere on the spectrum of.
It's the chance of some.
Something.
CBTG.
Right.
Money that's worth close enough.
Yeah.
Anything else, flagboard? Uh, public comment?
No, no public.
I have a question.
Yes.
I went to the Friends of Compton Library meeting last night. And discovered that the library budget does not have a line for small maintenance items. Such as light bulbs, having them installed. How is that allowed to happen in the municipality?
Most of it, most of like light bulbs fall into the general Compton Hall stuff, Dennis takes care of that stuff, generally speaking.
Because it was a little confusion last night as to where, where that would land.
Yeah, yeah, but small stuff like that, like painting, minor repairs around the building, it's, in my understanding, that's generally Dennis's, it's in Dennis's portion of the Compton Hall budget.
And from that meeting, uh. I've been in contact with Dennis and told him the two. Problems are going up with the. View from the back. And the, and the lights. And, uh, he's. He doesn't feel that curtains are needed, he got. He got rid of the toilet paper. Uh, but you can still look in and see the washer dryer, so it's. Yeah. Um, and I, I don't know what he did about the bulbs. And I, I don't know what he did about the bulbs, but supposedly it seemed like, he he sent me two little pictures. I guess to show that maybe he did replace the light bulbs. Climbed up there and.
You really said, I don't have a line for that, so we were just wondering if we. There.
Yeah, it would be that, a dentist.
Yeah, it's. The hall was inclusive, so that's always been where the maintenance line is down. There's never been a maintenance line. Thanks for the library that I know of.
Uh, next is, uh. To consider a request from the Conservation Commission to create an open space plan.
It won't work.
We have tasks, one of the. A year ago, we came to you with our open space definition. Who provide to the comprehensive plan rewrite, that was one of the things we were tasked with. We provided that, we presented a letter to be mailed out to the public, which was done. If we're gonna, she had a couple, a couple inquiries. We've discovered that there were questions that we didn't know to ask or to. Information to offer to people when we crafted that letter. What we're going to do is. Or do a rewrite and also work on a, a public. Public education piece. To try to make people more aware of the programs and how it can benefit them and their neighbors. One of the other pieces that came up out of our discussions around this. Is many of our local neighboring towns have open space plans. Some of them have both a comprehensive plan and an open space plan. Open space plan is similar to comprehensive plan, but it's. Looks just at open space and how a municipality. Use it, wants to maintain, maintain it and how they define it. To find it. What we submitted to you last year, however, with a comprehensive plan. Rewrite has stalled. A term generously, I went to the town website. And looked at the, what little bit there is on who the committee is and. Still has Mr. McDonald's being, select was represented to it. As as selectmen. We were actually. Reached out to by.
Yes.
By Winthrop about trying to do a regional open space plan. He reached out to us, he reached out to. Inchester has their own. Infield has open space, Infield and Manchester have open space plans.
They're just starting in Winthrop, they have zoning, but they don't have open space.
And we're, we have the sense from surveys that the town has done. And based on the comprehensive plan, people seem to value our rural character. But there's no. There's no instrument to promote keeping it rural. You sell off a plot here and a plot there and everyone still thinks it's rural and suddenly it's not. So we would like to draft a plan that we submit to you. To then to be submitted to the town. For town meeting. To define a, an open space plan. We don't have any details yet. Most of it is open source, we do have our local person who spent a lot of time, their professional career. Working or looking at these issues. Uh, we, we wanted to come to you before we started doing a lot of. Lifting on this. To see if, if the select board would, would support our moving forward with this. And then, but you know, presenting it to the town. Either in conjunction with comprehensive plan or in addition to.
I feel a little bit like Chicken Little. If we don't protect it, we're not gonna have it. And I want to do it sooner rather than later. But. What I'm thinking of, since this is gonna bomb in a conservation mission is, we need to get the buy-in. As part of the early parts of the plan. Because we need to know what people who have the property. Are thinking about doing and what do they want to do? Do they just want it to be open? Do they want it to be open to the public, whatever? And the carrot on that is the tax abatement. And then you've got this whole group of people who want to use the open land. Many of whom look at it as, well, it's open, why can't we go there? Well, the answer is because somebody owns it. You know, and they get to, to control it. And our, one of our pitches is. That we're asking you if you want to designate it as open space, completely. Voluntary and not lose any particular control over it. And get it to be a community kind of program, because we want it to stay rural. And the, um. When we say we had a little, um. Response to our letter. We got two. And it's not an effective way to sell people. Or to get people to buy into a plan or to find out if they want a plan. So what I've done so far was thinking about doing more of, but we want it to say. It's okay, go ahead before we do this is to go, plan to go to groups. And say, this is what open space is, this is what your benefit would be, this is what the benefit to other people would be. If the application, you want to, you want to do it. And so far, I went to the Trailblazers, who are. The gold standard of how to, how to work with other people's land. That's what we'd like to do is to come up with something that's going to be workable, that's not top-down. People's gotta want it, there are seven hundred and seven lots in town, over. Five acres that don't have a building on it. Don't ask me why I know that, but I do.
Well, I am too. My question is that one particular piece. Is in, that I own is in farmland and it's used. In the wintertime as a cross-country ski trail. But in the summertime, I can't have people out there because it's a hayfield, so there's not any, no, no walking. If you walk up there, you have to walk on the edge, you know.
And you don't want them walking on the edge because it's soundier.
Yes, exactly, so it's protect the hayfield or Andy gets mad.
You get to do that.
So, so how does that work if it's already? In my case, if I said, you know, yeah, I want to participate in this, if it's already in farmland.
Even if it's public access, you get to determine what kind of public access and we've heard about a lot.
Yeah.
I don't want to walk in in the hayfield.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, we, we hear that at every meeting from Andy who wants. Wants both, he wants the hayfields and he wants open space.
Yes.
He understands.
Yes.
You're the perfect sample. You're, you have yours in farmland, but you're allowing for a limited part of the year. But also gives.
Yeah.
All of the people who have, um, agreements with the snowmobile club, that's what they've done. But their easements that they're grant, or the, the permission that they're granting is seasonally limited.
Yes.
And for a specific use.
Yeah.
And that is perfectly acceptable for, for a piece of property that's an open, in any of the open space programs. I mean, if you put something in public use. You can still define the usage for that. So you don't have to let them walk through your hayfield. But encouraging people, I mean, the snowmobile club suffers every time a piece of property.
Yeah. Yeah.
Although they're, they're getting better at talking.
They're getting better, they're, they're reaching out to the owners.
Yes.
But we would like, we were, we were approached by some people who were looking places they could ride their horses. Anything.
Yeah.
And they, they were a little upset that the snowmobile club would not partner with them. And we pointed out to them that, you know, just because someone is willing to have a snowmobile come through their yard. For X months in the winter, they might not want a horse.
Yeah.
Or pedestrians other times of the year, and that's their right because it's, it's their land.
It wasn't that we were, weren't willing to partner with them, it was the fact that our statement, when we get this land permission. Says snowmobile, not and horses.
Yes, exactly.
You have to go to the homeowner, it's really, it wasn't that we weren't willing to work, it was.
And that was the. We conveyed to them.
And that's the thing, I mean, just because.
It's an issue of helping maintain.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's a biggie.
Yeah, it is.
And they do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and you know, obviously I'd be open to having horses on my property, but that, it stops it. You know, but when you cross over the, the line onto the next person and I'll have horses. Because, but not ATVs, because there's a big difference between a horse. Uh, hoof print and an ATV track, so, you know. I think it's education, I mean, I, I mean, me asking questions, learning about what it means to, to go into os, open space. I think that, you know, those are the things that people need to understand because, you know, we've always let snowmobilers go through there. But there's been a couple of times that I've threatened to not let snowmobilers go through there because of the. Two bad actors, you know, so, but, um, you know, they police themselves too, they.
Drive.
Yes. It's right there after the kids that are, or I am, and calling the game ward, so, um. You know, I think just giving the information out and having, putting meetings that people can go to and open forums and. So people can ask questions and understand what it means.
It is, may fail again to promote open space.
And I think the question that I've always run into is how does that affect me with liability if somebody decides they're gonna come. Cross-country ski on my property, you know.
We are, we are one of those states, there aren't many of them. Where you are, as the owner, you are liability free.
And I think that's another education piece, people don't know that.
I stayed stat.
Yeah, people don't know that, so it's hard to understand, you're thinking, oh, my God, if they come on my property and they fall and break their leg, you know.
You'd have to set a trap for them.
I do that for the bad kids on snowmobiles.
Is there a, don't say that.
Watch it, I'm the trap, so.
Is there a tension between open space and main. Critical need for housing? Do those concepts? Are, are they? I, I know in West Gardner, for instance, some selectman, uh, wanted to keep the rural nature of the town and he was proposing. I think five, five acre lots or something, something like that in order to prevent, um, development of West Gardner.
When, when you have five acres minimum, so you have five acres and a house in the middle of it.
Right.
You have five acres and a house in the middle of it, that's not really open space anymore.
Yeah.
It's not a hayfield, it's not a place that people can hunt. It's not a place that people can recreate unless the person grants them permissions. One of the things we have in the town's comprehensive plan is trying to encourage development within, within sewer district is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love to see. I know that someone came to a pre, pre-development meeting, the planning board bought a piece across from control school. I've not seen anything that came from that, from that meeting. As, as the President of Water Association, I would love to have a, a fellow there.
Yeah. Paying my sewer bill, I'd love to have more people on the sewer line, so. Yeah.
It's that, you know, it's weird, you want same thing around solar. We don't want, I mean, everyone says, you know, the, the last crop of agricultural field is a house. So we want to encourage people. Maybe struggling with their tax bill. And have an undeveloped piece of property to say, hey, you can get X percent off. Yes, there's a cost if you change your mind. If in two years, situation changes. There's a cost to doing that, but it's not, but for right now. Keeps it, you know, keeps our, our rural character.
There's another aspect of staying rural. That I see in terms of attracting people to the area without getting new, new lots. The people next door to me sold their property, were selling it and the, um, the listing said. Outstanding rural view of open fields and lake. And I looked at that and I knew their property and I said, wait a second, that's me. You know, so it's a bigger benefit. Than just, I want my open field and I want Jerry Smith to own it so it stays open. And I, and I have the view, it's. It's there and so. It's fine.
What, what do you need from us? This point?
Yes, we're looking, you're looking for. Mission to draft a open space plan that. If we were to create one and if the town were to accept it, that it would be. Used at least as well as the comprehensive plan is. And or supported more so, since that has tended to sort of just sit on the shelf. We don't know exactly what direction our plan would take. Not expecting the town to suddenly hold a lot of property. But we have requested that one piece, if the taxes aren't paid, the town hold. Because it's, it's open space, it's wetlands, it's not buildable. So we can have a plan, give people sort of a view of what benefits there are to having this open space. Since we all, the town claims to, to value its rural character, helping to maintain it.
So what, what is the board, everybody?
I'm on, I am on board with the board being on board.
And, and with these, with, with the Conservation Commission. Creating this.
Yeah.
Developing this plan.
Yeah.
Yes, everybody's.
Yeah, the only, the only thing, I mean. I'm wondering if, if you sent out seven hundred letters and only had two responses, is that concerning to you that people just aren't interested in?
Yeah.
Putting their property or you think it just did not do what it was supposed to do? And then the, the other thing is if we get a bunch of property that does go into this. Um, that reduces the tax revenue that we gather from those and that burden is now going to shift to. Um, because we still need the same amount of money to, to run the town, so that. I mean, if it's a very small percentage, I don't see it, but if it's snowballed, um, it could raise people taxes.
One thing on that, the people that I've talked to who didn't respond to it and then the two who did. Were interested in it, but didn't understand what we had said. And that, that's one thing, but the other thing is. One of these people just bought ninety seven acres. And I don't know that they had walked the land from the way it sounded. And I don't know that they had walked the land from the way it sounded, but it was, yeah, this will be good. But they wouldn't be putting ninety-seven acres in open space. That doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense. And you can just put part of it and you, it has to look like it's going to be open space. It's going to have some value as open space to somebody. So it will be a tax burden, but it won't be as big as it might seem. Because you just, you can't do, you can't do the whole thing.
Yeah, it seems like on a, on a small scale, it's not going to bother a whole lot. But if everybody jumped on board and said, this was great, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna throw ten percent of our property in town into open space. It could have. Which I don't see happening, but, um.
Well, I was kind of disappointed when, I mean, I only have four acres and I put everything in kind of the house law into open space. It made two hundred dollars difference. In my tax bill. But that wasn't my point, I want people to buy into open space.
Yes, and does the state reimburse us for any portion of that two hundred dollars? Now, this is, comes right, right off the tax.
Right, the, the current use programs are constitutional amendments, so they're exempt from the reimbursement requirement.
Is that the same with tree, tree growth?
Yeah, tree growth, open space, farmland, working waterfront, those are all. Those are all voted on by the people and it's, it's, it's in the constitution, so they pulled it out of that, that framework where they have to reimburse for the.
Like the homestead where there is a partial direct, right?
I, I think it's a good thing, absolutely, but. You step back and look at the overall, it's like, as long as it doesn't get too big, um, because it could have a negative impact. On. Act space.
We know you don't have to buy it, which it has done.
Well, just keep in mind that it's got to have checks and balances, that's all.
The borders have to prove it.
Some means for checks and balances.
Write it with a percentage. Percentage of land.
Maybe.
I mean, that's a much.
I say yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Go for it, yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, next thing on the agenda, the authorized disposal of old woodworking equipment. From Mammoth Academy.
Yes.
At the, uh.
That woodworking equipment. I make a motion, we authorize it.
Well, I mean, I, but I have a couple of questions, I mean, has anybody looked at it? I mean, I haven't seen it since Mr. Milligan and. Is it?
It's from like the fifties.
I know, it's the, what was there that? I mean, is there?
Mr. Verrill and Mr. Milligan.
Exactly.
It was, it was back.
Yeah, yeah, in the shop, I mean, is. I mean, because some equipment they don't make like that anymore.
It was good equipment.
Yes.
You know, at the time, um, and I know the, the idea behind saving it was, well, we might bring industrial arts back and we're going to need that equipment. While the equipment is so old that the safety requirements, you could never put that in a. Yeah, when, when. Um, it may be of use to somebody.
To somebody, so, so by disposing of it, we're going to list it somewhere and.
Whatever you want to do, anything, anything that's like a, that's a, that's an asset or could be considered a capital asset to the town, you're the only ones that can get rid of it. So because it's so big and it may be worth something. I need your permission before we get rid of it, if you want me to bid it out, I can do that.
Well, I, I mean, I would like to see if there's some worth to it because it might be something that somebody. Wants or needs, I mean, I don't know. Well, it could be, but I mean, some of that stuff.
If someone had a woodwork, like old planer and stuff. Um, that's a big expensive piece of equipment, you know, someone would pay eight or ten thousand dollars for that equipment new today.
Exactly.
It may be worth something to someone.
That's right.
Uh, it's free phase. I think you can, you know, electrician can do some conversions on that to.
Trick it into two face.
Yes, yes. It's not, yeah, I don't, I don't, it's been quite a while, I've seen it upstairs, but I don't know everything that's there and. It may be something where you want to, I don't know, maybe we should look at it and see what's there and then decide if we. We put it out to bid or.
Package, package deal.
If we don't put it out to bid, what do we do with it?
Just like we say, we can't save it there.
I, I don't know about that, I know that, I know they'd like to get it out of the garage because they think it's a lot of real stuff, I think they need to make a better use of the space. Because no one's used it as far as I know, or not in a long time.
So I make a motion that we send it out to bid and if we get no interest, then we, uh, figure out a way to dispose of it.
See, is it something you think you want to work out?
I would hope to look at it and I would be able to tell fairly quickly if it has any value.
Yeah, so.
You want to talk with me on it?
Yeah.
I'll go up with you and sure, take a look.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we're going to be able to reduce anybody's tax.
Solve the kitchen equipment back to Carrera or to Carrera from before they tore down. Gymnasium. Exactly. Everything, so, I mean, that's the thing that I think about is, why are we, you know. And it's, in worst case scenario, then, yeah, we get the price for no. So, but something to somebody, so I would rather have. It could be good use. Yeah, I think that's the plan.
And also what I'm thinking of. Uh, tomorrow at two thirty?
I don't think it's next week. I think it's this Thursday. I think, I think they're meeting, I have to look up again because I. Yeah, I think it's next Thursday, I put it in my calendar for next Thursday, we're doing a walkthrough. Um, at the, at, at the building. Um, and I think whether or not we're looking at, uh, windows and stuff like that, definitely checking that. Two thirty. And the reason I just, you know, we, we are planning on, the academy building committee is planning on coming and meeting with. With everybody, but, um. Dawn had a death in the family and so we're trying to let Dawn take a deep breath and get her things squared away. But we will be here and we'll be able to present the newest budget and, um, hopefully. And then I'll have heard from the Stephen King Foundation and things like that, so that's my hope. Talking about doing grants, um. Let's see. It's not letting me look because I haven't.
We want to, uh. Next item, which is the, uh. War number twenty-one. Terry Tell, Bert Royer, it's our business services, six thousand four hundred and three dollars. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand twenty-seven, thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. Dennis K Burke, Fuel, one thousand six hundred and twenty-two. EcoMaine tipping fees, three thousand four hundred and twenty-three. ABN Oil Heating Fuel, four thousand one hundred and fourteen. DDI Services, the cleaning vendor, nineteen thousand six hundred and eighteen. We haven't paid them in a long time because we weren't satisfied and they were still at the police department on the invoices and a whole bunch of stuff. But we finally, we got it straightened out. Grimal Industries, uh, demo removal, two thousand five hundred and fifty-two. A municipal association workers comp, four thousand five hundred and ninety-four. Main Technology Group, two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight. Organical Services, uh, HVAC repairs, one thousand two hundred and sixty-six. Hickerson and O'Day Academy Project expenditures, six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Entry Engineering, this is the end of the sidewalk project, uh, eight thousand four hundred. RCO two, four hundred eighty-six thousand sixty dollars. State of Maine Motor Vehicles, twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-six. State of Maine IFNW, two thousand five hundred and seventy-four. US Bank Corporate Trust, in fact, a building road bond debt payment, interest payment, five thousand eight hundred. A grand total of five hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
Make a motion, we approve war number twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second sound.
So the motion by Ken, second by Chris. To approve, uh, warrant number twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, all those in favor?
I make the motion, we adjourn.